So for, we will be recording this for anybody. So if you don't want your face up on the, on the recording or on the online, because we do upload this. When I get time into our website and you can, it is there for all of YouTube people to see. So if you don't want your face up on there, then then it's, go ahead and put your, your name there instead. I think we're good. Okay. So we're going to start. Chris has got three different field trip type shows. And the first one is out to the Bayou Ranch, which was kind of an informal field trip. And there was only Chris and Sigrid there, from what I understand.
Actually, there was three of us, but only two participated in the, the show. So, so it's pretty well been there with Sigrid and I.
Yeah. So I'll, I think I've turned on the thing that you can share your screen, Chris, and see if we can do one thing without a hitch.
We will see.
Is it better when you're playing the video, if we all turn our cameras off? Would that be better for the bandwidth?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Okay.
Oh, we've got something new. Preferences. I rebuilt this computer. Things aren't going smoothly.
That sounds like a Mac thing.
Yeah. Security and privacy.
Oh, that's okay. We've got a few people coming in just now, so.
Mine always works so easily.
You know what to do?
I think so.
I think you've told other people what to do, so.
Careful. Yeah, actually got a Mac Mini with the Apple M1 chip, and I had to reinstall Zoom. They have apparently separate additions for an Apple chip or the Intel chip. When I first loaded it, I found that I, my camera wouldn't connect. So that might be happening with the privacy and the share screen thing too, Chris.
He had to reboot because he's gone. Watching all of us on 3D. Caliphate guy. Trevor. I think that's Trevor, right? Chris back in.
Sorry about that. I think we might be working now. We'll see. And everything is shut down.
Let's say you're still on the screen.
Yeah. Says universal access. Yes, I thought it was working.
Do you want me to see if somebody else can share it in case it's on this end? Or do you think it's because yours?
No, I think it might be working. Let's just try this.
There we go.
You got the bar you?
Well, it says you started screen sharing, but we don't see anything yet.
I was asking for another password.
Here, try mine.
There we go.
Very nice.
Yeah, those were great harvesting shots, both of you. I really wish I'd come along now since I'm doing a story that I could have really used shots like that.
Very, very early harvest.
Yeah.
Amazing work. Great job. I tried to get out there, but it just didn't match up. Had a lot of events happening that night.
Lorelei is muted.
Now she's back.
Right now, thank you guys. Sorry. Sorry. I did that. I shut that off. While the shows are playing, sometimes it's, it's nice to shut it off just to make sure that we're not sending any funny noises out when the shows are on. So thank you, Chris, for putting that together. And thank both of you two for going to that field trip. Because those are really, really pretty pictures. Um, so we are going to have theme right now first. And John, you are going to take that over, I believe. And we'll see how this goes.
Yeah, sorry, I it kicked me out and then had to kick me back in. Okay. So I will find the right, sorry, I just need to find the right window now. Too many windows.
So the theme this month, for those that are new, was open. The first theme of every year is always an open theme, which means that you can put whatever you want in there. And we get together for most of the meetings, the Monday or Tuesday before the meeting, and whoever wants to come can come and we collect quick notes on, on our critique. And that's what Trevor is, not Trevor, that's what John is presenting.
Almost there. So let's need to do that. Oh, and doing that, I lost my Zoom window. Okay. All right. And then if I do that work?
Yes.
Okay. So I've got some notes here. With this one. So this was called Trio of Shadows. So we really liked the nice sharp text on the equipment and the really good sense of storytelling here. There's, we thought it had a really nice mood to it, really good light. And this is a good alternative shot of sort of the classic band shot. This was, we thought this was a nice alternative. The only comment, we thought it was maybe the top quarter was somewhat distracting, maybe it could have been toned down. It's kind of hard because of the angle it was shot at and where it was shot. Recognize that. I was a pretty, we were pretty impressed with the photo.
And you should say that it, some people found it distracting, but it also led to a sense of place.
Oh, that's great.
Always a little bit toss up as to whether it should be there, it shouldn't be there. But we thought if it was kept in, leave it in, but maybe tone it down a little bit. So that way you still get the storytelling.
Right.
And you've got the photographers name, John, or do I need to?
This was Byron, as I recall. Yeah, I might not have all the, all of them down here.
So you'll just have to hit the info on the side if you're.
So, yeah, so this was Byron's. Okay. Next one. This was called Playing the Odds. Some things we liked about it is gave you a sense of being part of a group. And we felt that the contrast textures in the hair and the balloon was, there was a nice contrast between those. Knowing that the hedge shapes mirror balloons. There's also this sense of how the oldest, it looks like the oldest child is protecting the younger ones, like you might find a fair really nice, good depth of field, good color, thought the use of a square format was really a good choice here.
Who's photo was it?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. So this was right, Trevor Millers. So this one's called Land of Dinosaurs. We felt that this had very nice tones. The whites were not overblown or blown out. Had nice textures, good textures in the foreground. The ridge line is nice and that moves you back and forth. The, the nice tones is probably the result of an HDR multiple exposure HDR. But we, yeah. Quite liked it again. This one is Gord, Gorderes. This one's called Salt Spring Sunrise. It, we thought it had a really nice summertime feel, very nice light. Like the path that leads into the image and the nice contrast of the yellow path in the bottom with corresponding to the yellow up in the left. The only thing we might, that could have been improved is this sense of a black blob in the lower left corner. Just seems a bit too dark. Overall, yeah. A nice nice picture with boats, I guess. And yeah, and this one was Judy's. So this one's called Visitors. We like the nice cat, we like the nice catchlights in the eyes. Know, really brings in, into those, those deer. Felt that they could use a crop to better focus on the subject. It was a little too much going on in the photo. And that's the upper, that bright spot in the upper right, sorry, upper left. It's a bit too hot, but what's interesting, or what we thought was interesting was the white, because it's on a white fence, it doesn't actually distract as much as it might have. But those were yeah, that's what we thought of this. And this was, I believe it was Ralph's. Yeah. So this one is called Peonies, as I recall. One of the things we, we thought was really good about is how the statements are really nice and sharp. And we had a bit of a discussion about in sort of flower photography, that that's the game though, that center of the flower is really important. It's like how in a portrait, you have to get the eyes really sharp for it to be appreciated. And then it's okay if the petals of the flower are a little more blurred, but gain that nice center sharp is really, we thought was really important. This has really nice textures and shapes. We wondered if that white spot might be a spider. Sort of one of those things, once you see it, you can't unsee it. So if you didn't see it before. Thought maybe it was a bit dark, but maybe that that was intentional. Again, we I mean really nice photo. This one is by Sigrid. Okay, I'm just going to call this one running. That's not actually what it's called, but I can't pronounce the mountain range, so. So things we liked about this, the, that the the person's running towards the photographer instead of a way, so we kind of you, you feel like you're, it's more inclusive as opposed to, I guess, if they're running out of the photo. Really good depth of field. You can see lots of detail of the valley. Uh, one of the things we know is the figure doesn't actually get lost, even though this is a, you know, pretty wide open area. The, the figure doesn't get lost. And part of that has to do with, because it interest, it's intersecting with the slope. We also know that it's right at that sort of sweet spot in composition, that one third by one third intersection. Like the colors of the trees versus the darker the mountains. And that that light spot on the right was really adds to this photo. And this was Ralph's. Oops, hit the wrong button. So this one's called Coal Mine Silhouette. And we, we thought it had fantastic sky color. That is wonderfully sharp. When you look at those branches of the trees, you can see just the, the real detail of them. Uh, the train bridge, I guess, depending on if you look close enough for the monitor you're on, you might not be able to see it from my monitor, but you can kind of see the train bridge in there. It adds kind of a nice subtle texture into the dark of the bottom. Some of the ways we thought this could be improved is the horizon could be, could have been straightened. Uh, we also felt like it, either you need, it need to have a wider view. Because the, to be more balanced, or maybe crop off the water tower, which feels like it's falling out of the photo. Um, and then if you did that, it would give more of a minimalist effect to the, to the photo. So those were our suggestions. Again, you know, wonderful, nice sunset colors. Miss.
That was mine, Dana's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll try doing some of those ideas.
Yeah. You're welcome. So this one's called Harvest Light. Things we liked about it were the leading lines. There's this nice white line that draws you right into that photo. We thought maybe it was because of the, that's those particular stocks have been driven on. Maybe by irrigation wheels. Uh, the sky colors are really nice. It has this nice muted late evening glow to it. The only suggestion we had for is maybe making the combine brighter, so you see more details of it. But we recognize that's hard to do because you're shooting into the light. But yeah. A nice fall photo. This was by George Clayton. So this one's called Turtle Mountain Valley. And we found that, yeah, it had a really nice concept. It's, it's a very beautiful view. We felt like it, it's overly contrasty. We were knowing in some of the details that it seemed to have been shot with a high ISO for the time of day it was shot at. So maybe this led to an overexposure. Uh, maybe it was that, so that because this is a panorama. Uh, maybe it was, there was different exposures between the component photos, so that when they were combined, you, you kind of ended up with some things over, um, overblown. Uh, maybe this would have been better as a black and white because of that. Uh, one of the things we know, know is possibly the photographer was trying to darken up the sky. Because you, if you look at the trees, there's kind of this almost an uneven line where it kind of darkens. But yeah, you know, certainly a really nice view Turtle Mountain. This one was by Kathleen.
From perhaps a comment from Kathleen, if she's with us. What technique she was using, because it is a very interesting set of tones that she's achieved in there.
Oh, okay. So, um, yeah, I was just going to type this out, but anyway, I will tell you. So actually, this was a, my little Panasonic, Panasonic Lumex camera. My husband and I had to go up there on, got like a side by side razor thing. So it just shakes and you can't take the really good camera. Anyway, um, my Panasonic does like the panorama. You just, it just, you know, you go across, you don't have to put it together, but I used what was called impressive uh, impressive art or impressive scenery or something like that. So it automatically did, did that in there. So that's why it's, it's looking different, I guess. But yeah, it, it might be interesting to see what it would look like as, as a black and white.
All right. Well, thank you, Kathleen.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks for explaining that, yes. Some of those filters on the cameras can do some unexpected things. And unfortunately, you won't have an original left.
So this one's called Watertown Sunset. Well, you, we thought this was a really nice example of a time lapse. And you can see this with the soft clouds and the soft water the surface of the lake. We like that the horizon line was broken up by the triangular wedges of the mountains. Uh, it was noted that normally these photos tend to have the valley right in the middle. Uh, and we'd like that it was offset here and that you saw the, with the rocks on the, on the right hand side. Uh, so we thought it was a very nice alternate view what we might normally see, has really nice tones. Yeah, very, very nice evening shot. And this one was by Doug Petru. Okay, this may be a case where I can't read my own handwriting, but I think it's called Premier Lake Meteor Shower or Promise Lake Meteor Shower. I'm not quite sure. But things we, we thought were fun in this is the streaks. Uh, we were wondering if maybe the really bright one might have been the International Space Station. The stars are very nice and sharp. We know that this is definitely a very wide angle shot, and you can tell that because of the trees on the on the left of how they're leaning. This has very nice colors of the horizon. The layers of the, of the mountains adds a nice texture to it, to those dark areas. And having the boats in the middle and kind of, and centered really grounds the photo. You can definitely tell it's a, a longer exposure because of the streaks. We, we think that's why you see the streaks in the water in the the bottom. Again, very impressive night shot. And I, I think given the number of nights where we had hazy, smoky skies, I, I think the photographer was really fortunate. Get out there. So this was taken by Chris Oates. Oh, and it's called Premier Lake. Okay, like I said, couldn't quite read my handwriting on that. All right, now we have the last one. Oh, not the last one, sorry. So things we liked in this photo, oh, I, all I wrote down was cat. So I know that's not quite the, the title. We'll, we'll get to the title in there. Really like the expression, the cat's eyes. There's a really nice sense of humor in the photo. Love the catchlights in the cat's eyes. Um, that the purple and the yellow are nice complementary colors. Adds to the photo. Um, that the purple and the yellow are nice complementary colors adds to the photo. The only sort of thing we noted here was that, that reflection at the back of the book is distracting, but again, that's hard to fix because it's a reflective surface. It has that, of course, plasticky laminate on it. But very, very fun photo. This one was by Sean called Storytime. So this one's called Abandoned. We, we thought there was a lot to this photo. Things like, we like how the trees are leaning towards the building. Uh, that there's really, the exposure is really nice with the white snow is really well done. Uh, the nice balance between the building and the tree, the sharp edges of the tree versus the soft curves of the tree. Sorry. The sharpness of the building contrasted with the curves of the tree. Uh, we liked how you could see through the building to the, to the horizon at the back. Gives it a nice depth of field. Depth to the photo. The trees do feel important and that they're not busy. The only, yeah, we noted that there is some fringing around the roof. But other than that, we thought it was a, a really nice photo. This one, yeah, was Chris Cooks. So this one's called Electric Tails. And it, we really liked the details of the lines in the photo. We thought those were, were really awesome and it has some nice colors. The blues and pinks are really nice. We did feel that it could use more punch. So maybe boosting the whites, that was a suggestion we had that might kind of brighten it up, uh, or alternatively maybe cropping the bottom off. So it's a nice, sort of, you have a really narrow strip of black at the bottom. Those were two suggestions that we had. This one was by El Presidente. Laura Lee. And this is the final photo. So this one's called Watching the World. We felt like it had a really, the subject had a really good placement. We liked the matching gold in the eyes and the rock. Uh, that the eyes were at that one third spot so that the composition was really nice in that respect. And felt like the detail in the fur was, was really nice. You know, you really, I guess it gives a very nice soft feel to it. Like you want cuddle up with this thing. And this one was actually taken by myself. Was our final one.
I just want to ask, um, Wayne had, um, said, and I believe it was on George's image that you said, um, great use of flash.
Yes, I get great use of flash. Sorry, which one was George's?
Uh, the
Harvest one?
Oh, the harvest one.
Sorry, not that one. It was. Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one.
So.
Did I say flash?
Not you, not you. Wayne said it.
Oh, Wayne, sorry. Cause I, yeah, I, I don't have the chat ups because it's showing, I think the whole screen.
That's okay. I'm just questioning Wayne. Is it one that you were talking about?
This is the one. Yes. And when I first saw it, uh, it looked like, um, there was some flash with that on the road that is bent over there, but then as I looked further down, it still stays as light as that.
That's right. I don't think his flash reached that far.
I know. Otherwise you would have lit up the combine like we wanted, but yeah. Yeah. Thanks for clarifying that, Rory. Quite great.
Okay.
But actually, um, I did write a note in there. If, uh, we should explain the, that old rule of third compositions that was mentioned a few times. For the sake of our, uh, what is it? Two new members we have? Or are they familiar with the term?
Yeah. So the, the rule of thirds.
This is no leopard picture.
Okay. Well, yeah, I, I think it came up a couple of times, but we can, you know, we can use that as the example. Um, so the, I, the idea being, okay, let's see if I can explain this well. The idea being that, uh, the sort of key spots in a photo, if you were to take the photo dividing into thirds, both horizontally and vertically, where those lines intersect is, are, is where you want to put your subject. Um, that's going to give you a nice balanced photo. So if we use this as an example, um, you could look, you can see that the leopard is, you know, um, side to side that its body is in that sort of one third to the left. And if you look at from top to bottom, its body actually goes along the line of, of, um,
If you move your mouse, I can see it, right? So can you just kind of?
Sorry.
I said, if you move your mouse and kind of show us where the line.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if you could see my mouse. Okay. So geez. Okay. So if you can see my mouse, so this being the one third line to the left. And then, well, roughly. It's not exact. And then another one here. And then I was just talking about how at the bottom third and kind of see the body of it. And so the idea being where those two intersect being this, this area right here is where the, the primary subject is.
And your top, your top third line, like your top, going to.
Yeah. And then the top third would be about where the, the subject's eyes are.
Which is perfect.
Yeah. Usually you want your eyes on that top there. There's also some talk about, um, what it means to a photo as in if, if they're at the top left like that, it's a, it portrays a strong image of, you know, in this case him or whatever. And if you want some, if something to appear more subdued or quiet or whatever, you would put um, your subject in the bottom right hand corner. Um, I say, I say that with a little bit of, uh, whatever, because if you go back to Ralph's image, which is where we talked about it before too, she's in the bottom, um, right corner. And I don't know whether we would consider that, you know.
Subdued.
So, but she is at that interesting, you know, intersecting point there, which makes it, um, I don't think she's subdued in this picture, but, uh, it, it's a good spot for her to be in because she's at one of those intersecting lines.
This one actually, I think shows it a little bit better, uh, because of the positioning. It is a little more dynamic because she's just a bit off the one third there. What I was trying to do with my iPhone here was to show if you are editing a picture on a phone, it will actually show you where those, uh, one third intersections are. But I can't get this to show here for some reason.
Put it in front of you.
There you go. But yes, if, uh,
It's because you have a blurry background, Wayne. Oh, I think you can see it there.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah. Anyway, uh, I don't know if, uh, our two new people have uh, cell phone, or I don't know if it's on all cell phones. I've been using the iPhone for so long, but uh, a lot of editing programs will also put those crosshairs on for you. Uh, or you can remove them, but it's, it's quite handy that way.
Could, could I add, um, now that we're on this picture, uh, just a, a thing I noticed Ralph, because I really like this picture. And I really like the balance between the person and that there's no peak above that person. And then diagonal to her, there's a peak on the other side. I just think it would be a little bit stronger if you showed the end of that peak.
On the top of the left one?
The top, yeah.
I probably have a copy with that, but yeah.
But I really like this picture. Very nice.
I think that peak goes on forever. Can't be that.
It could be, it can be as well.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Uh, do you want me to go back to any other photos?
Does Chris want to tell us about his night shot?
Sure. It was at Premier Lake and it was during the meteor shower. I don't know if that was the, uh, space station or not, but, uh, there were a lot of meteors that night. It was the, uh, the peak. And, uh, it was with a wide angle lens, very wide, 14 millimeter. Uh, anything else you'd like to know?
And so are the streaks in the water because the water was moving?
Uh, I'm not sure why that is.
Yeah, I think that would be the cause there really. I noticed there is a bit of a light coming in from the bottom, uh, on the water there too. What, what is that light source from, Chris?
There, there is very little light. It's just probably the cabins at the far end or I'm not sure.
Okay.
There, it's, it's a beach there and there's very, there's no light anywhere around there.
Oh, yeah. Um, again, perhaps for the benefit of our, our new, uh, members here. There's a, a number of, uh, members in the club here that do some spectacular night photography and that the meteor shower that Chris is talking about, I think is what it's called a purse, Percy.
Percy, yeah.
Um, so I look forward if you'd like to get into that type of thing. Uh, there's a lot of events, uh, astrology wise, astronomy wise, that, uh, some people can share some information with you on.
There's some astrology too.
What are your settings, Chris?
I'm not sure. This was probably 15, 20 seconds.
Actually it's on the left.
20 seconds on the left.
Just read on the left.
Sorry about that. So he's got.
Do you use landscape stacker for this one, Chris?
No, I didn't know.
20 seconds it says.
It's before, it's before you taught me how to do it with George.
That's what I told him the other day. I said, I said, this was taken in August. So it was before he got together with George. Cause we were trying to determine what, uh, how dark it was or what time, what time of day you were taking, what time of night you were taking it out.
It was, it was a pretty clear night. There's, there seems to be a hint of aurora in the distance. And, uh, it was, uh, probably around midnight.
Yeah, it was just before midnight. It says 2043.
It's not aurora, it's just air glow.
Is it?
Yeah.
And that, and, uh, Premier Lake is north of Wausau, which is north of Cranbrook. And it's a, it's a very dark spot.
Excellent image.
Thank you. Nice. It's big.
So Alicia, how come we keep losing you and coming back? Anyways, anybody got any other questions? We're all good, then, uh, yeah, John, you can stop screen sharing. Okay, um, I've been kind of up in the air, so I don't know. Okay, I'm going to do this, uh, this segment. So we decided that we would do a little talk on the Brezner Brennizer, Brennizer method. Sorry about that. And for those of you that don't know about it, it gets a little bit detailed because you have to understand the difference between a wide lens and a narrow lens, right? So a wide lens, if you set it at, um, I should, I should pull up my, my, uh, demo here. Um, I have to share a screen, right? Or do, no, you guys see what I, yeah, you did.
Now we only see you.
Yeah, right. So I will pull this up. And you guys can see that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um, the Brennizer method. Um, and I will see what it said. It's a technique that allows you to achieve the appearance of a really wide lens with a ridiculously impossible shallow depth of field by taking a bunch of photos and then stitching them together. So if you're to take, um, this photo with a wide angle lens, wide angle lens, um, always has more in focus than, than a telephoto lens. So if you were to take this exact photo at say 2.8 and if addable with a wide angle lens, there would be more in focus than if you were to take this photo with a, um, 100 millimeter at 2.8. It's just the way the lenses work. So if you watch, um, so, so these were, for instance, this one. Uh, he says, um, that this was taken, uh, with 22 separate images. So what he does is he takes a whole bunch of images. He, he'll focus on, you'll focus on the bride and groom or the couple or whatever your main subject is. And that's what you focus on and say, if you're using a tele, so you're taking this with a telephoto lens. So you might have it at 200, at 2.8. Or if you have like, he, he had a lot of his were shot with, um, an 85, 1.4. Where did he say?
Yeah.
Here he is, 85, 1.4. So it's a really shallow depth of field. And then once you've focused on them and taking, and taking that picture, then you just set the, um, manual focus so that it doesn't keep readjusting and then take all of these pictures so that all of that blurriness is at 1.4. And then when it's stitched together, it comes across something like this. But if you were to take it with, um, he says this one, the resulting depth of field is equivalent to using a 32 millimeter lens at F 0.5. So you get that really cool look. Um, if you were to take it with a 32 lens at 1.4, if, if there was one, there would be a lot more in focus. So they call this, um, do you call it up here? I think so. Uh, what did I say? Boca, Boca Panorama is a lot of, uh, what they call it. To Ryan Brennizer, Brennizer was just a guy who really started using it a lot for wedding photography. So then they started calling it that, but it's not really here. So this is what happens when you stitch, um, something together and it usually comes up with some missing parts and then you uh, crop it however you want to. So I didn't, I was going to go out and do some shots, but I didn't. So then again, here you get a really dreamy look because of all the stuff that's, um, out of focus. If you just took this with the 85 in one shot, you would probably only get, uh, you know, like a very narrow picture, but because he took, he would take this picture and then he would take, um, several. And some of them were taken at quite, quite a few images. And sometimes he just took six images and stitched them together. Another one. Some of them don't show up quite as, you know, to me, that's not quite as dreamy looking. Sounds pretty nice. So it's not just for portraits. There are other times you can use it probably for architecture or something. And again, this one he took with, uh, with 85, 1.4 and it's equivalent of a 34 millimeter at point by six, which there is, you know, no such thing.
But Laura Lee, I have a question. Where, like, let's say in this one that you have your mouse on, it says eight images with the 85 millimeter at 1.4, right? Where is he taking those shots? Like where is he focusing on each shot? Is he moving like a panel, like shooting?
If you watch it, he, well, you can see in the one that he, um, stitched up here. It's not just, you can tell he's like up here, here and over here. He's just going all over it.
Okay. Huh.
And if you watch him, there was one, I, I had pulled up a video of him, uh, shooting. shooting, but it was really long and a whole bunch of stuff in between there, so I didn't, I didn't bring it up to show you, but he's, he's standing there and he's just you know, getting that first shot and then he just goes around and make sure he gets as much as he thinks he needs in the scene and just keeps taking pictures, all these pictures.
Well, do you think this picture on the bottom left, right, like you have the the stitching picture? And on the bottom left of, up, 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 go up, on the picture that he stitched everything. On the bottom left, you can clearly see there's a picture there, right? Like you think he's focusing on them and just keeps that side, or he?
The the way you do it is you you take the first picture of the the couple and you lock the focus on them. And then you take all the other shots and stitch them together. So the focus never changes.
Okay, I got it.
And and what he's done there is, again, just angled the camera aside so we can get a wider shot again, as Laura likes to do, much like doing a panorama merge with some overlap. And that we, and that's exactly what he's after. In effect, this would be a
A close up panorama.
Close up panorama, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he stands in one spot and then just moves the camera and all all around. Once again, like, like you said, you take a picture and you focus on on your couple and then you set your manual focus to that so that that doesn't change. And then it's at the one point four all around.
And you set all your, all your settings to manual.
Right, right.
I'm curious, I'm not sure how he's decided what the virtual F-stop would be, but.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Um, it says up here, according to Ryan Brenizer apparently made some kind of a where is it? I think even if if we click on equivalents, just hang on a second.
There's probably somewhere in the internet that tells you how to calculate it.
Yeah, he's.
There's a website.
Calculator right here. So I think he I can click and see. We can see it. But there's can you see that? Or do you look, do I look? Yeah.
Yeah, I can see that, yeah, that's.
They have figured this out with.
Marvelous.
Well, I didn't know you could do it.
Cool.
Very cool.
So I think that's all, yeah, that's all I want to show. So I'll quit screen sharing, but we've got Chris and Bronny who both did some things. So we'll let Chris do it first, because he, because when we were talking at our executive meeting, we had thought, oh, because we were all a little bit not too sure about it all, but we thought maybe you should use a while at Chris talk about it. So he tried it, what we were going to talk about, and it didn't work, and he's going to let you know why it doesn't. A slider, we were going to use a slider, but decided that didn't work.
So can you see my, my finder?
Yeah.
And you can still see it there. Okay. So I I tried it with a slider and took multiple pictures. This is still, is it just, it looks like it's not big enough. Stretch it out. Still not.
Yeah, it's filling the screen each time you click on it.
Yeah, it's cut off. Okay, so I took a bunch of pictures with a slider. And then tried to stitch them together. And it wouldn't stitch, it said the frames don't match. And the reason is, you look at this picture. And then you look at the next picture and the perspective changes on the head.
Yeah.
So you can see a different year.
Right.
And so it it couldn't do it. So, but just a quick and dirty version of it, which you focus on the head and then go through the other pictures. And put them together and it, it works fine. So this is, again, it's not showing the whole screen, but.
Good, good example, Chris.
It's this was shot with a fifty millimeter at one point eight. And it creates the Boca Panorama, but very simple to do.
So I'd love to see that with like a twenty four or or something at wide lens, that's what I was going to go out and do, shoot this.
Okay.
With a wide lens at the same aperture or whatever, and then so that.
Although, although everything would be in focus then.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted to, so that they could see the difference between just shooting the wide lens versus doing this panel.
So the difference between your slider and your panel was the panel you rotated the camera as well?
With with the panel, I just, I just stood in one spot and handed it like a regular panorama.
Yeah, so you kind of get a curve arc here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Whereas the slider physically moves the camera left, right?
Stepping sideways and stepping sideways again when you put it on the, on the
Yeah.
Right, which you can't do because then you're
Changing. Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you, Chris. And Bronny, you have one that you did?
Yeah, I do. I can quickly show you what I did. All right, so it's it's actually a pretty cool cool exercise and you can, you can really make your photos stand out by using this method. So this is a shot I just took with my thirty five mil ones. And then I did the Brenizer, kind of compare it to what it's going to look like. So this is the this is the reference photo. And I put took forty eight photos. Stitched them together. And this is, this is the final image.
Yeah.
So, so if you look at this, I'll just kind of zoom in a little bit. You see how much it's kind of in focus in there? Versus when you do the Brenizer. I ended up with, so I put it into that calculator that Laura was showing later, earlier. So I ended up with imitating thirty nine millimeter lens at zero point fifty two. So, right, so it's pretty cool to achieve anything like that with with your lens.
Yeah.
Normally wouldn't be able to achieve. So I was shooting forty eight photos, I was quite overlapping, I'm pretty sure I would I could get away with maybe half of them. Then I need to shoot as many for for the stacking. The only disadvantage I see, as you can guys see here on the bottom, it's because I was handholding anything, I didn't have any, you know, sliding rails or anything like that. So you can see a little bit of curve down here comparing to, you know, the straight lines in the reference photo. And that's that's caused because me moving, panning the camera all around. So I just started here in the middle. I mean, all the way up, move down here, then these pictures, then up these pictures and so on. So this advantage is the, is the curvature on the bottom, but I think the the result itself, it's I think it's pretty cool. You you wouldn't be able to take a single shot with such a shallow depth of field. Ever, so, yeah, we know.
That wide of a shot.
That wide of a shot, even even if I was shooting this with my two hundred mil at two point eight, I would never get this shallow depth of field. So it it's a pretty cool method and it's, it's a good good tool to have. And it works for portraits, it, you know, it works for landscape, you know, you just imagine you have a really cool looking tree somewhere. But there's some other trees in the background and and you just want to isolate the tree. I think this would be pretty good method to do, you know, just to to look on the tree and just shoot this panorama around it and then you you very nicely can isolate that main subject, the tree, you know, you want from the background, just like I did in this case with with a statue here, so.
So when you merge the multiple images, was that done using like a panorama stitch or?
It was, it was, just let me move here, Lightroom. So, so this is my reference photo. My friends, this is my reference photo.
I don't think we'll see it.
Yeah, I think we lost it.
Oh, sorry.
Because you just shared the one screen.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, just a second. Let me just share the different one. So here's the, here's the reference photo I took with a thirty five mil. And then, as you can tell, I was just going shooting this image is going down. As you can tell, I was quite overlapping, so I didn't have to overlap as much. And then I was just going up, you know, and then just moved to the left a little bit and just going down and and so on. So I I took forty eight photos and then what you do, you just select them like this. All these forty eight. And then you just right click and photo merge here and to panorama. And what it does, it just spits out this thing. So it's a, it's a pretty big, it's a pretty big file, it's like eighty, eighty megabytes or something like that when I switch it together. And then I just cropped it and that's the result I showed you. So again, you know, it's, it's going to take a while to load a hundred percent, but.
So what what lens did you use to take the pictures?
So for this one, I use my one oh five mil, one point four.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you can, you can already get pretty shallow depth of field shooting with that. Plus, when you, when you stitch it together, it's, it's really, you can isolate the subject from from the background, like you wouldn't be able with any wide angle, wide angle lens. So it's, it's, it's just a cool, cool cool tool to have in your, your back pocket. It doesn't work all the time, but you know, sometimes it works and then you can make your photos look very different, very unique from from anything you see, so.
Yeah. The way it goes on the screen right now, it looks quite three dimensional. She just pops out from that background.
Right, yeah. So if, yeah, if you compare this to to this, right, you can tell the huge difference.
Seems to work well when there's a foreground and a background.
That, that's a good comment. That's why I was looking for something in a foreground as well for these bushes. So it 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 kind of gives you all the depth in the foreground and background. That's a really good comment. Thanks for that, Chris, yeah. What I did notice, Bronny, in this picture is that, and I mean, I guess with like trying it out more, everything can get tweaked, but I did notice that the blur is not even throughout the picture. You know what I mean? Okay, so where exactly? I think, like, if if you look at, maybe to the left. Not, not, like, it's, it's all blurred, but it's like different degrees of blurriness. You know what I mean? Like that, the the edge of the bench there over the over the thing, or if you even go a bit more to the left, maybe the window's a bit not as blurry. And I think in the tree, there's a spot that is not as blurred as the rest. Yeah, that area, that area there. Yeah, but I think it's kind of like pockets, right, or no?
It would be on the same focal plane.
Yeah, this one, this one is, the branches are where she is. And these branches are in the back, so the, yeah, the the branches were kind of coming towards me, so that's why maybe it looks like this area is more focused. But they were were closer to me kind of where she is and and these branches are way behind her. So that's why it kind of looks a little bit, but if if you think about it, if you lock the focus on her and then, you know, you switch your focus to manual and you just go around, everything should be, everything should be the same focal plane, right?
Well, that's the thing, those tree branches would be very close to the same plane of focus.
Yeah.
So that's going to happen anytime.
It, it, I totally agree with you, it can kind of a little bit puzzling, puzzling you when you look at it and we're not, we're not used to looking at pictures like this, you know, wide angle, it's such a super shallow depth of field. Yeah, I agree. So, yeah, it, it, I like to experiment with this, it's, I think I'm going to use it in the future, it's, it's pretty cool methods and trick to know. So that's why we decided to kind of show it and and people can Google Brenizer and and play with it and it's, it's fairly simple, but yeah. The disadvantage is definitely for me was the barrel distortion on the bottom, especially when I would start shooting, kind of pointing my camera down, shooting this. Yeah, then you definitely get that distortion in here, but. Especially because you have a very prominent line going across, right? Right, yeah, so you can, you can definitely see, but again, it can just add to to the, you know, uniqueness, I guess.
Yeah, a question about the barrel distortion that you mentioned. In Lightroom, when you do panorama stitch, it's got three different modes, is what's cylindrical, perspective, and I don't know. Spherical, so did you try the all three?
You know what? I did this in in Lightroom, the stitch, so I don't think Lightroom has it.
Yes, it does.
It does. I'm not sure, I only tried the the default one. But that's a good point, maybe if I tried the other ones, maybe that will fix it.
It might, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I haven't tried it, I haven't tried that one, but yeah, it's worth of trying it for sure. Yeah, that's.
You can do, if you're doing, for instance, if this was a couple that was standing there. You know how Bronny caught part of her quite a few times? Sometimes you'll just focus on just them, but sometimes you'll do parts. But anyways, if you do parts, you should always do one shot that just gets the couple. That way, if they move or it doesn't stitch quite right there or something happens, then you can always use that photo to just stick them in the middle again or whatever, use Photoshop to get a, get a good picture. But, you know, all in all, it should work, but sometimes they say that it's nice to get that base image of the couple by themselves before you start doing all of this.
That is, that is correct. If you have a moving subject for sure, just take one photo that the whole subject is is in the picture, so you can use that picture if the other overlapping images are, you know, moving or not the same. But yeah, with the statue, it was kind of easy for me, right? But yeah, I agree with Laura Lee. If you have moving subject, take a photo of the subject first and then move around your camera.
Okay, I think we better move on. That's good, because our we're going to have a Bean There segment first, I think, and then Maximo actually says, well, I want to do, I can do next segment on stitching and panels. And I thought, well, this would be a good time to do it because it kind of ties into what we, what we were wanting to talk with, so. But we'll have a little break and Chris is going to show another one of his shows.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you, especially to Nada for letting us all out there.
Maybe we should explain for the new people what field trips are.
Yeah, whoa. Oops, I lost you guys. Sorry. Um, so. Field trips, I'll talk, I'll get you in a minute. Sorry. Field trips, um, say right now, Sigrid, are you alone in? Creating the field trip, Sigrid?
Okay, I lost myself. Um. I think I was supposed to have Gerard, but, uh, he doesn't seem to be available a lot of times or he's not really. So anyways, just kinda do things. And, uh, so I'll take suggestions from members. Most of the time our executive. When we meet once a month, we'll kinda brainstorm the things we think people would like to do. And then I just kinda make the arrangements to set it up. So, and I'm always willing to hear new ideas. I kinda wanna do different places that we haven't done. For a long time or ever or, but it was just so that we're not always running the same. Field trips one year after the other. I kinda like to see your two, two or three year span between some of them. So, but, yeah, and then we just meet as a group. If it's a far away place, we usually try to carpool. Covid seems to have kind of got a bit of a damper on that, so. And, um, and Candor, I think there is a list of previous field trips on the website. So. But, um, and then if we do local, then most people just drive and meet at places. And then we just usually have, uh, a time and then just whatever hours kinda meet as a group and then we kinda go from there. And fun just to go and photograph with people in places that you wouldn't travel by yourself. Which is what I kind of enjoy, cause there's a lot of places I would have done, but I will never do it. Driving alone in case the car breaks down or, you know, it's just somewhere I don't, I'm not familiar with. I feel better. You know, the safety of crowds kind of idea. So, and it's a good way to get to meet people and, um. And just get better. Like I find that I learn a lot from other photographers on field trips.
Also, someone else has been there, but you haven't. Um, I often know, you know, the places to go to get the pictures there, if you know what I mean. Or the, where the paths are, where the heights are or whatever like that. Whereas if you go out on your, often you, um, at least I do. I get there and I don't know where to go to get pictures. Um, so, so it helps to have a group for that. And sometime in, in, in normal times, we, uh, have done indoor fields, which are kind of like workshops where we'll do go indoors and, um. Not necessarily, uh, photograph what's there, but we will set up an indoor kinda field trip and do light painting or something like that. But, um, that's kind of about out of the question for now. So Nada, do you wanna talk about, uh, your, uh, your flower farm and?
Just a sec here. Oh, okay. Um, I'm in my greenhouse, cause I still have to make bouquets tonight, so, um, yeah. It's, uh, I have two, pardon me, I have two plots, um, that are, one is, uh. Fifty by fifty, it's not all used. And the other one is seventy by seventy and, uh. I grow in four foot beds that are one sixty seven feet long, the other one are fifty feet long. And it's very intensely planted and, um, you scoot down the aisles, cause there's only a foot and a half, because every square foot is. Plants, because that's where the money's in, not in the pathway. So it's, uh, now it's a jungle, like you can hardly pass through it all. And, uh, but, uh, yeah, I'm very thankful for those that did come out and you did an amazing job. Thank you very much. And thanks for the nice show, Chris. So if anyone has questions, I don't mind to answer.
And once again, thank you, Aneta, for, um, letting us all or letting, make it out there again. But for everybody that went out there and having them over there, that was really wonderful of you to do. Uh, so now I think we're on to Max. That segment.
Okay, I think this will, um. Actually go well with the presentation you guys just did. Uh, maybe for a bit more of the, uh, starting people in the club. It'll give him an idea how to make a panorama, how to take a picture, how to shoot a panorama as well. Um, also, it's not only pattern, I, I call it panoramas, but it's basically stitching pictures however you want. So. This will help you, uh, know how to do it, uh, in Lightroom as well. Um, know how to do what Brandy was showing, for example, in Lightroom, Lightroom. So. The idea of doing this, um, is because many times I would hike with my wife and we would go to really cool places like this one. And I would take a picture and the mountains are way bigger. And, 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 and take up a lot more of your field of view than what a single picture takes. So, um, I was just frustrated sometimes that I would come back and I would not capture the entire scene. So started shooting multiple shots and stitching them together. So this is a picture at twenty four millimeters and one single picture. And this is the same, uh, picture or a similar picture at twenty four millimeters. But I took five pictures and, um, stitched them all together. And essentially you get a much bigger view of what the area looks like. Uh, and a much bigger sense of where I was and I can transmit that. Um, and if I, if I zoom into this, it's, it's the same size and distance I was from the subject than from the previous picture. Uh, and that's what you can achieve by stitching pictures together. So what I'll talk about is the benefits of stitching these pictures together. And then I'll go over with an example of a picture of how to take that picture and the mistakes I've made. And then I'll move into Lightroom and show you guys, uh, the, the steps to, to stitch them together, which is essentially, it, it's very simple. Uh, method. So why would you wanna shoot a panorama or stitch pictures together? What, what are the advantages of doing this? And, um, first you can just capture much more of an area into a picture. It doesn't have to be a, a landscape like I'm doing. You can, you, you can be. In the middle of the city or doing street photography and it's just, uh, you might just take two pictures. Cause you just wanna fit that, you know, extra meter into a picture and e- even if you go the widest you wanna go, it just doesn't fit. Sometimes, uh, you can replace a wide angle lens, um, or when a wide angle lens isn't enough. Um, I, I mean, I don't think you can fully replace the view that a wide angle lens gives you. Or maybe you can with, with the technique they just showed. Um, but sometimes you don't have a wide angle lens and you wanna fit. A lot more into your view, so you can take multiple shots and stitch them all together. Or sometimes your wide angle lens just isn't wide enough. Um, the other advantage this has is that it will, by stitching multiple pictures together, you're increasing the pixels. Um, and e- essentially you end up with a much higher resolution picture, so you can print a really big print and it'll still be sharp. And, um, you can basically show a bigger sense of, um. Of a real scale of where you were. So I, I have a lot of times, uh, I shoot a lot of mountains and many times I shoot them with a wide angle lens to get them. Uh, into the scene. Give me a second, I'm running out of battery in my laptop. Let me just get the charger. And there we go. We're good. Um, and many times I would take the picture with the wide angle lens. And the mountains will just look very small and not to scale of what I was shooting. So by stitching pictures together, you can, you can zoom in and take multiple pictures and then the mountain will look. Uh, at a much more real scale of what you're looking at. And then the other thing is you can simply focus stack. Um, by, by, by stitching pictures together, if you're shooting something very close, and then you should have a picture of something that's further away. Both of them will be in focus. So when you stitch them, the entire picture is in focus. So here's an example of what I'm talking about. I shot this in Jasper and this is a single picture. Um, but I, I felt like I wasn't capturing the expanse and, 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 um. The width of everything that I was seeing. And this picture was taken at, uh, forty eight millimeters. So. Uh, in a similar picture, I shot this where I shot three pictures at forty four millimeters. So it's similar focal length, uh, and I shot three vertical pictures. Uh, let me see if I can get the laser pointer. There we go. Can you see a laser pointer?
Yes.
Perfect. So I shot three vertical pictures like this. Uh, and stitched them together and you can see the entire scene that we were missing in the other picture. And people just look smaller because the picture's crammed into the screen, but if I put it at actual size side by side. Um, I'm, I'm actually shooting at a very similar focal length. And what I mean by, uh, they end up being very high resolution is if I zoom into this at a hundred percent. You can see that it's still very sharp. So if I were to print this at its real size, I end up printing a picture, it's like a meter and a half. Um, super, uh, sharp. This is another similar example where, um, I actually took this picture. Uh, when I took this picture as a single photo, I was missing half of this mountain to the right. Um, and the mountains at the back were actually looking a lot smaller because I had to widen out my view. So I decided to take three pictures at thirty eight millimeters, again, three vertical pictures and stitch them together. And I was able to get this mountain into view and the mountain actually looked a lot bigger when I shot it this way. So, um. I don't only use this for panoramas. This can be used, like I said, to get that extra, uh, amount of image into your photo. So I took this picture at, um, it's, it's a picture of Mount Robson. And these are two pictures stitched together. So if I were to shoot the same picture. Um. Horizontally. I was missing a lot of sky at the top. I didn't have any breathing room at the top or any breathing room at the bottom. And I wanted to shore, show that, that little line, that little shoreline. So I went vertical and when I shot the picture vertical, I thought that I was cramming the side of the glacier here. And I didn't get enough breathing room to the, uh, ridge of the mountain. So what I decided to do was shoot at eighteen millimeters, the same focal length I was using for both the previous pictures. And, uh, shoot two pictures. So I shot one at the bottom and half of the other one at the top. And I stitched them together and I got the entire composition into one image after that. So you can get that extra bit of, of, of picture into your shot, uh, by just taking an extra picture. So how do you shoot that panorama? Um, I will use this picture I took in Jasper as an example of how to shoot it. So I took three shots at forty six millimeters for this one. Three vertical shots like this that I stitched together. Okay? So what do you wanna do? Um, if you can shoot it with a tripod, that's better. It's the ideal. It just allows you to be more precise. With the shots you're taking, but that's not necessary. This shot I took, uh, was actually handheld. In a very windy day on the side of a ridge. So the pictures were definitely not taken under the ideal conditions and. All of them were kind of crooked and the program is very smart and stitched them all together fine. And, uh, when you're taking these pictures, you wanna try to make sure you're centered with the scene as possible. So, um, when I took this, I was more or less standing here where the arrows pointing at, not dead center, but centered enough. Um. Contrary to, for example, if I was standing here when I take this picture, I would have taken one here, one here and one here. This mountain would end up being very far from where I'm standing and these mountains here would have been very close. So when the program stitches them, it distorts this mountain as compared to these. So for example, uh, these are some mistakes I made in the past, where in this picture I was standing here on the side to the left. So as you can see, this mountain is very distorted to the side. It loses sharpness and it's, it's kind of stretched out. And the distance between the sky and the top of the mountain is very different than what we see here. Um, this gap was bigger than what you see here, but it was definitely not this difference between them. So it stretched the mountain upwards and it cropped the sky. So it basically distorted my entire image. If I had been standing. More in the center, it would have been easier to, to get that entire image into one. And I think this was three or four pictures I took, uh, vertical as well. Another example is this one that I took in Waterton, where I believe I was standing here to the right. And I had this big wall next to me and I was not dead center in the picture. So basically. The, the program stretched out this mountain. And it cropped the top of this wall next to me when this was actually in the picture, because I was standing way too close to this wall. And I was really far away from these. So if I had been standing more in the center, I would have been able to get the entire picture to stitch perfectly. Um, and then what you wanna do when you're taking those pictures is pick a line to guide you. Um, and what do I mean by that? Um, is basically you wanna focus on an area. That's, uh, probably in the horizon. When you have mountains, it's kinda hard, but I guided myself by these peaks. And when you're taking each picture, you kinda wanna be able to follow that line as you're taking them, because you wanna leave the same space. Um, at the top as you're living at the bottom, because if you're taking that picture sort of in diagonal. Um, then the, when, when all the pictures are stitched together, they're gonna be cropped in a diagonal way. And you're gonna end up with a lot less sky in this side than on this side, for example, or cropped at the foreground as compared to the other side. Um, so you can basically use, my camera's a very old camera, so I think anybody's camera nowadays will have the grid lines. So you can basically place the grid lines on your camera if you want. I didn't even use grid lines for this picture. I just fired them away. And use those grid lines to guide you, uh, through the picture.
There's your third.
There is a rule of thir is exactly, yes. And and then when you're shooting, you basically want to capture more or less fifty percent of the previous picture. You can capture to thirty five and the program will probably still stitch it. So if I have the picture here, what I want to do is take a picture of the left side. Then take another picture that encompasses fifty percent of that side. And fifty percent of a new side. And then my third picture will encompass more or less fifty percent of this one and the rest of the picture. It doesn't have to be perfect. The algorithm is really good and it will stitch it. What you do want to do is leave enough space at the top and at the bottom, because if you're not very precise with that line, it will crop an area to try to stitch it together perfectly. So always leave some breathing room at the top and at the bottom. Since you're really ramping up the the pixels and the definition, cropping is normally not an issue. And you'll still end up with a very sharp picture. If to go a bit trickier, much like Branny did with his shots, you can essentially stitch almost anything. You can shoot pictures at the top, pictures at the bottom, pictures at the side, and the algorithm is really good and it will recognize it and patch them all together. So this is a picture I took in the crow's nest pass and I ended up not being happy with it because I took three horizontal pictures. And these mountains were really big. And because I took three horizontal pictures with a wide angle lens shot at eighteen millimeters, the the mountains ended up looking very small. And I was not happy with with that because it didn't represent what I was looking at. So the next time I I went out in a different scene, I made sure I did that right. So what I did here was zoom in at thirty two millimeters. So go further in. Of course, the entirety of the mountain that was very big and very close to me did not fit in my in my in my screen or in in my camera. So what I did was I took five pictures of the top scene. And then I took five pictures of the bottom scene, making sure that the bottom pictures encompassed fifty percent of the top pictures and fifty percent of the picture they had to the side. So I ended up taking ten pictures of the entire scene. And then the program just stitches them all together. And if you want to see the resolution that this ends up with, this would be a little square of a hundred percent zoom. If I zoom in. You can see that the picture, maybe with the with the trend with sharing it through zoom is not the best, but the picture is very sharp. So if I were to print this, it's a giant print that is very, very sharp. And another thing you want to consider when you're shooting panoramas, especially if you're outside is exposure bracketing. So since you're shooting multiple pictures, each exposure of each picture is probably going to be different because you're you're shooting differently to the sun on each picture since you're moving around. So what I recommend is actually putting exposure bracketing, so shooting one shot at the right exposure and then one shot one stop above and one shot one step below. If you have a crazy dynamic range, you can even take five shots. And for the picture here, oh, sorry, for the previous picture, I actually took thirty shots because each for each square, I took three pictures. And then the program will do an HDR panorama stitch altogether. So it will recognize and fuse the three exposures and combine all the pictures together. And finally, if you're shooting outside, avoid using a polarizer when you do this because you're going to get a crazy effect in the sky because the polarizers is is going to be set at a different angle from the sun on every shot. So you're going to get a very different darkness on 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 each part of the sky. So let's see how we do this in Lightroom. Let me stop sharing because I believe I have to share again. Go into the light. Which is here. We'll show you basically what Branny did in Lightroom with a much simpler example. So we have these three pictures here, the ones in red. And this is simply the library of Lightroom. And to combine them, I click on the first one and then I go shift and click on the last one. So it's a flex all the pictures. And you right click on the pictures. And you go up to photo merge. So if you had taken multiple exposures of each one, you can just click HDR panorama and it will fuse them all together. But in this case, since it's a single exposure of each one, I just click panorama. And this is, these are the settings of the panorama before it merges it. So here it's combining the panorama. It's not fully merged. Still, I click merge here at the bottom. And these are the three projections that Dwayne was talking about. So we have spherical, which you know, basically, I think it it basically fills the inside of a sphere with the picture. Cylinder crawl, cylindrical, which I think it basically wraps the picture around a cylinder. And perspective, which I'm not sure what it does. So you you can select the one that looks the best for you. Each each picture, depending on the situation, will 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 have one that looks better for it. Sometimes it'll distort it to the side. Sometimes it'll stretch up the mountain or or whatever you're shooting, if you're shooting a building. You can select auto cropped or not have it selected. So if you don't have it selected, this is how you see what the pictures look like before the cropping, the automatic cropping that the computer does. And this is why you want to leave some breathing room at the bottom and at the top of the pictures because then it will crop here where they all match. So if I hit auto crop, it crops some there. You can click fill edges where basically the program will do, if you have, let's say clouds here at the top, if you click fill edges, the program will replicate these clouds at the top and fill them all together. Same with the border. But if you have very complex this distinctive foreground, for example, it will not do a good job of doing that. Auto settings simply processes your photo in an in an auto setting way. And then you simply click merge. And give it a little time till it merges. Normally, depending on how many pictures you use, it can take from thirty seconds to five to ten minutes and depending on how fast your computer is. So here we have the three pictures I had picked. And here is the picture that I ended up with. And this is it. This is the the merge once it's finished. And the great thing of this is that it merges it into a raw file. So it doesn't spit out a JPEG or anything like that. So you can edit it as a raw file. And and just go into the develop settings and and just edit. And that's about it. If anybody has some questions, I'm happy to take some. And I'm sure there's a lot of people that do panoramas in the club that might have a lot more tips than the ones I just gave.
I I guess I have one tip, which is sometimes when you you're out and you take lots of shots. You kind of forget which ones are the ones for the panorama. So one technique I heard of is you take a photo of your hand. Then take the shots for your panorama and then take another shot of your hand. So you kind of have this bracket of, you know, that was the set of shots that you wanted to use.
That that's a great advice, John, because I have definitely gone through a lot of pictures that I cannot figure out which one was supposed to go with which.
Yeah, I wanted to say that that was an excellent presentation, Maximo.
Thank you, Trevor.
Really very good and excellent images too. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, one one point, like that image you had with the water so still and calm worked beautiful image. That's a tough one to get at Waterton though. Your your water really, if it's any kind of waves on it, that really creates a problem in the software trying to merge the images. Or if you've got some other action like people walking or whatever, you can try it. It's some interesting results. But water is really tough because you get the waves coming and it just doesn't know what to do. Like I'm thinking particularly an ocean beach scene or something like that.
That's actually a great point, Wayne, because I forgot to mention that. When you have people, you want to make sure you get the people in one shot. And you're not getting in the second shot a part of those people. Because then the program cannot stitch them because if the people are moving the they they have to be still because if the people are moving, the program will stitch maybe three arms onto somebody or something like that. And same with with anything that has movement, much like water. If you have a wave and you shoot that wave and then you shoot half of that wave again in the next picture, unless you're shooting a really fast picture. It'll it'll create a it'll just be distorted when when it stitches them together because it's not identical one to the other, right?
Like, have you tried to for this specific issues like with the with the water and stuff like stitching them in Photoshop actually? And selecting which part of the image will be the the base and then just adding adding to it, just kind of like manually kind of matching it, those photos. I don't know if you ever tried it?
Yeah, I know that can be done. I have not done that. Because I I specifically tried to avoid that. So then it just stitches fast in Lightroom. But I know that, yeah, I know that can be done in Photoshop. I haven't really played much with it. Maybe you can do a presentation on it, Branny.
I just saw a guy, he was shooting people, subjects were people. So obviously they're moving it, you know, at the time of this. When he was doing the the panel and then I know he was stitching it in Photoshop in a way that they were in like replicating in different shots and you know, he was. It was quite interesting. It required a little bit more work, obviously, but the result was really good.
I can definitely see that, yeah. You can you can probably blend out or clone out certain things that you don't like from from the people. I I definitely had two three legged people sometimes. And I think I I could have been able to clone out maybe a leg or something to look good, but yeah, it's definitely a lot more work.
And the difference really between your panels that you were showing and what we were showing is that you're trying to get as much detail into a picture as you can. And we were trying to get as little detail into the picture as we could, but they're both panoramics and just that's creating the two different looks.
I I thought Branny's example was pretty cool because it was a crazy stitch and basically every possible direction that you can shoot. He he shot and it it still figures out a way to just patch it all together.
Right. Great. Awesome. Any more questions for Maximo? If not, I think we're on to Chris and the last thing for the meeting and we're pretty good on time. So this is our downtown field trip.
Not that one.
Yeah, beautiful. Anybody? So the the, yeah, we talked a bit about the field trips. Forget what I was gonna say now. Anyway, says something about the newcomers, I was gonna say. Oh, I know I was gonna say that. Especially when for for the newcomers for like Ruth is very new with your camera. The field trips are really, really the best place to get a hands on. Learning of your camera that even even when we met met in meetings. It's really hard for us to do a demo where we're actually going out and touching your camera and finding your settings and. And those kind of things that that might help you out that I really encourage if you can make it to any field trips. Then don't be afraid to ask anybody for some help or if you see somebody taking a picture, say, hey, what are you doing there? And and how can I do that with my camera kind of thing? So. Just want to welcome you to do that. So is there anybody else? Any questions about the field trips or anything else that was presented today?
We have our next one planned already.
Right. Do you want to talk about it?
October the second, going to Waterton. And I was thinking a meeting, maybe ten, ten thirty. Whatever group would like. And do you know the spot? It's going to be behind the Prince of Wales Hotel, but before you get. To Kilmorey Lodge, there's like a little camp or day thing.
Oh, the day.
What's up?
The day use area.
Yeah. And if you go to the back of it, you can go to the shore and then there's these really cool rocks. And they have some wind balloon trees and there's a whole pathway that goes there. And I've gone to the rocks. I've never done the pathway, but I thought that would be kind of a cool meeting spot if you guys were in for it.
Do you want to run that by me again? Where it is?
It'll it actually faces directly into Mount Bimmy. And just before you get to Kilmorey Lodge, but it's on the backside of Prince of Wales Hotel, there is a day use area. And it's really quite deep. And if you kind of go all the way to the end of it. We will be close to these really cool rocks that jet out. And it just looks like something that's not anywhere else in the park. And you can take a pathway up there and. Does anybody know where that is besides?
Draw a little map when we send it out. Really unclear what road you're talking about that we need to turn on or whatever. Yeah, just draw a little map when we send out the information for the for the field.
Isn't it opposite the Cameron Lake Road?
Yes, absolutely. Exactly opposite the Cameron Lake Road.
Yeah.
Okay.
What time is that, Sigrid?
I don't know. You think ten or ten thirty? What with the group? Raise your hand. Ten, ten thirty, because I like sleeping in a bed.
It's like getting up at sunrise.
I'll be there. I'll be there earlier.
Yep.
I'd like to come, but would there be a way if I could catch a ride with somebody?
Not with COVID.
Yeah. Let's go with.
Way to go, Chris.
Oh, look at you go. That is so cool. Okay, so your your cursor is just to the left of the little jetted out. Right, sorry. Right there. Those are the rocks I want to get to.
That's the Prince of Wales.
Yeah. And then see that little, it almost looks like a bit of a shadow or a little point coming out of the shoreline. Yeah. Those are the cool rocks. And they're really neat. It's not like anything else around the park. And I've never gone past those rocks, but I noticed that there is a trail that goes a little bit further. So.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Awesome. And you're going on rain or shine?
I don't know. So.
You don't want to meet in town first and then? No, we'll just go out there because some people want to go out early. It's it's likely going to be off and on all day, right?
I've never looked at the weather that far ahead. I thought it was supposed to be gorgeous for a red rock coolie. So and we see how well that turned.
Okay, that sounds that sounds great for October second. That's a Saturday, I'm assuming.
Yep, yes.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions about anything? No, we're all good. I want to suggest that everybody wear a costume at the next meeting since it's, you know, almost Halloween. And we want to find into the meeting. So everybody show up with something on their head or something.
It's in the top part of their body.
Yeah. Other than that, can I talk to the executive quickly right after? If everybody else wants to log off, I just have a question for the executive. But thank you, everybody, for coming and thank you, everybody, for all the hard work, Maximo and Chris and and everybody, Ralph. We didn't show your show.
Don't worry. Next time. It's already after nine. Don't worry. It's always good to have one in the bag.
Okay, sorry. Sorry about that. Scratch off my thing. Okay, then I'll keep the executive here. We'll show Ralph show next time. And. Wait a few more.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night, guys.
Bye.